We're good.
All right.
Maybe it is to the right side.
I'd like to call the July meeting of the Marvin Planning Board to order at 6:32 on July 20th. Let me start with allowing an introduction and welcome to our newest board member, Rich.
Thank you. Nice to be here, Tom.
And, you know, I just found out he's a second-termer. He was on the board for how long?
Five years.
Five years previously. So, and I think maybe he's volunteered to take Paul's place.
Those are some large shoes, no, mine not.
Anyway, so we're glad to have you.
That's right. Ken is a lawyer.
That's right. Well, we have two.
He's our new wordsmith.
So, we now have a, once again, a full board.
Do not jinx it.
Okay. All right, so we do have all seven members in attendance, either here in Village Hall, yes, everybody, thank you, or we have two that have either come online or called in. That would be Ken and Kent. So, we have a full quorum. Adoption of the agenda, any requested changes, modifications to the agenda as presented. Hearing none, I guess. I'll make a motion that we adopt the agenda as presented. Second by Michael. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay. Next item is adoption of the minutes for the 6:15 meeting. Has everybody read those? Have any changes or comments on those? Boy, this meeting's going quickly tonight.
Don't jinx us.
There you go.
Okay.
No hitter gone in the first inning.
All right. Motion to adopt, anybody?
Somebody.
Melinda?
Second.
Michael. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Got everybody. Then, public comment period. Do we have any signed up? Anybody online wishing to make a public comment? Hearing none, I'll close the public comment period. Moving right on. Items of discussion. First item, perform the function of the design review board to review the signage plan for the Marvin Village Hall project located at the corner of Newtown Road and Marvin School Road. It's 10006 Marvin School Road. And you're gonna present that first thing?
Yeah, I actually want to introduce Hunter if I haven't got a second to do that.
I missed that. Sorry. You're not the newest anymore.
Yeah, Hunter's our new planner. He comes through us with several years of municipal experience in a few different municipalities as a COG representative, but we've hired him here full-time, so we're excited to have him. Just wanted to introduce him. That was okay.
So, I think I had the pleasure to meet everybody here in person and looking forward to meeting the additional members that are participating virtually, but we're all excited to be here and I'm not gonna say much because I know we want to keep this meeting moving forward, so. Like him already.
So, I'm gonna let him just kind of take it over. As you know, the Village Hall project was our first non-commercial building that was, that's really gone through this design review process, other than Marvin Gardens, which is a little bit different because it's on ICD. So, that was a fun process that we had at the beginning of the year, so we are getting ready to begin construction on that. The sign approval was not a part of the approval that y'all did, if y'all recall that, and so we're just looking to move forward with just the internal, I'm sorry, the external Village of Marvin signs, which is included in your packet. Pretty straightforward.
So, yeah, there's a memo kind of included in your guys' packet. Hopefully, it's all referenced right. I kind of had a little short notice to kind of get it to you, but, you know, with that being said, I kind of, it's a submit, it's a sign permit application for a non-residential, which is required by our ordinance to go to design review board. It's for the new Village Hall property right down the road here at, what is it, 106 Marvin School Road.
Mm-hmm.
And currently, it's own residential. Government facilities are permitted to use in that district. And once again, so it just kind of follows under the regular sign application for that government facility. It's for two, this sign application at this time is just for the two walls, or the two mounted wall signs that will be on the Village Hall structure itself. I think there is talk about the monument sign, but that's, that's gonna be completely separate down the road, so it's just for these two signages right now. And if you had a chance to review the memo or not, it's pretty straightforward, kind of with the dimensions and placement. There's a sketch in the packet as well on where, you know, kind of what it's gonna look like. It's gonna go on the two sides and I guess both inches is correct.
It'll be on the front and the back.
Yeah.
Is this the sketch you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Is there not a sketch of it on the actual building?
It is actually on the building. It's just really faded.
Yeah.
That's the pillars there. And you see the, you know.
It was actually in, oh, gosh, I just, it was.
This is one of Michael's pet peeves. I was about to go see it on the building, so.
We had some printer issues last week, so it's probably got thrown into that, but we did have it on the initial plans. Yeah, it's on.
It's on the website?
Yeah.
Y'all saw this whenever you.
It was shown on the gable, those small gables.
Yeah, there you go.
Oh, there you go. That's all.
It's actually gonna be on the backside too.
Yeah, so it's gonna be on both sides.
Perfect.
Those that are at home, are you sharing that with them so they can see?
They, he's not. You have to click in WebEx, click Share at the bottom. And then you'll click the screen, you wanna share. Google Chrome to the part to the far right. There you go. And Share.
School never ends.
No, we're learning as we go, but, yeah, in the packets, that's kind of, you know, the dimensions of it, but here's kind of a better example of it on the Village Hall. So, this will be on the side facing Newtown Road. It's not shown here, but there will also be the same sign, the same dimensions and everything, just kind of on the other side facing the parking lot, which, once again, all kind of permitted with our current sign ordinance. I kind of highlighted it and, you know, was talking about the multiple sign copies. Basically, that's just explaining that the signs have to be the same size, dimension, look, and if it's, and it is permitted as long as it's facing, you know, the road frontages, which one will be facing Newtown Road and the other one with the parking lot slash kind of be seen, I guess, from Marvin School Road. Maybe not.
Maybe.
Maybe. But, but it's permitted on both sides. So, with that being said, does, does any board members, anybody have any questions on anything specifically?
It's just black. It's aluminum, but it's painted black.
Correct.
Yep. How, how long does the, the paint last with being outdoors in weather?
I don't know if we're prepared to answer that question. We can ask the sign vendor, but we're not gonna let it look dingy.
I'm just curious. It's not, you know, how often do we have to maintain it?
Yeah. I don't, we don't know that answer, unfortunately, right now.
So, I see if anything's dependent on aluminum.
As needed.
It's painted.
It's aluminum, but it's painted.
It should.
Hunter, can you just?
It depends on how often you get up there and wax it, Kelly.
There we go.
John, after you. You first. I'm sorry, did John?
I told her it depends on how often she gets up there and waxes it.
The sign is, will be illuminated, and this is where we were talking about, 'cause in here, we're talking about backlit.
I think it is.
Or the first lit. Or this is not lit at all. This is just.
No, not this one.
So, nothing shining down on it or anything?
Just straight projected, just straight wall mounted, kind of, not a super projection, but it's the.
Are we gonna have landscape lights to shine the?
The board wanted to have landscape lights. It wasn't a part of the plan, so that'll be something that we bring back.
So, we can, if they want, they can bring it up later. I think that'd be great. At nighttime to show off.
There's a couple of changes that we made since y'all have approved, just very minor changes. For example, we've changed pine straw to mulch, higher quality standard. So, we're preparing a conformity report, and we'll get it back to you at the, at a later date, so y'all can see some of the minor changes we've made, and we can talk about that at that point in time.
I just think it looks so nice and clean. Like, it's nothing, like, the font's not gaudy. It doesn't look like too much, and I just think that that looks great.
And that is, is the actual color of the building? We're gonna have a white building?
Yes.
Perfect. Black roof?
Where it's come so far since they first started looking at.
Yeah, at the barn.
The barn.
Motion to approve?
I will, yeah, well, oh, just wanted to also mention, yeah, everything's compliant. The total square foot, just for one of the signs, is 10.9, roughly 11 square feet, just because it's 10 inches, and the letters are 10 inches by, I think it was 13.
13 feet or something.
Yeah. So, you know, with the, with the language of wall dimensioned signs is maximum 30 square feet, so, you know, if you interpret that as even as the total for the square foot, 'cause it reads, I think, linear square foot of the building, it would still be compliant with both sides if you want, if you want to take that as the total. But, other than that, I just kind of wanted to, if there are any other questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them, or Christina can, and if not, I want you guys to move forward.
Moving forward. Motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second, Melinda. All in favor? All here, and now we've got.
Looks great.
And share so that we can get two more.
Oh, yeah.
See, you know, here, see, here's Paul.
Stop sharing up there, maybe.
This is, this is a text amendment, so I started.
Ken, Kent.
Good to have you listening, Kent.
We need to hear Ken.
Kent, did you vote, or?
Yeah, I did.
Oh, okay. And Ken, you okay?
I think he's frozen, actually.
He's very serious.
There he is, there he is.
He wasn't frozen.
I don't think he heard you.
Yeah. Ken, can you hear us? Okay, he's good.
All right. Okay. Unanimous. Very good. It is an interlude aside, I understand that we have a whole building permit, and I actually saw people out there today as I drove by. I don't know what they were doing, but I saw people there.
They were gonna put footings down today, but, you know, whatever.
Yeah.
It was sloppy.
But there was someone physically there.
So, what is the actual timeframe?
Three inches.
They're good, they're good.
I think I left, but from the time they pour the footers to getting the certificate of occupancy.
Yeah, they have eight months to complete by the time the notice to proceed was issued, which was done today. However, I will tell you, the guy, the superintendent told me that it'll be up pretty quickly. He didn't give me a timeframe, but he was kind of alluding to it'll be faster than eight months. So, we're hoping to be in by the end of the year, so fingers crossed.
That's aggressive.
Moving. How long did that?
We're twelve, we're about 13 minutes in.
All right. Anyway, moving on, perform the function of the design review board to review the signage plan and landscaping plan for the cottages Marvin Gardens.
Okay, yeah. This is one of the last things before Rohit, what, before he left, when, this was something that he was in conversation with, with Marvin Gardens. The residential part, which I think it's a 25 unit senior living, it's part of the residential of the Marvin Gardens section. This permit's just essentially for the two monument signs on the entrance of the subdivision for, for the, for the development itself, and I don't think the advocate's present, but pretty, pretty kind of, once again, kind of straightforward here that this, it's a little different because it is in the ICD, which, what our ordinance states is, once again, any of those has to come to the design review board. It is nine. It's residential, so it doesn't fall into that commercial category and other things, but it's pretty outlined in our ordinance of specifically what needs to be there and not, and I even reviewed the specific language for the ICD. It's pretty much mirrors our ordinance for the monument signs for residential subdivisions. It calls for either a curved, one curved sign, or it can have two monument signs on, on each side of the road, and that's what the developers are proposing and doing here. Kind of, once again, straightforward in the memo, make sure I have it right, is that the two, the two signs or the area are 5.8 without the base. I included the base as well, 'cause it's, it's six feet. If you look at what's required in the monument sign dimensions in our ordinance, as well as in the ICD-specific language, the area is a maximum of 40 square feet. That complies. It's under the maximum, the height, the minimum, six feet. It's right at six feet for the height of the base, so that's in compliance. The depth varies from three to four feet. That one also is compliant. Not really sure how up the sign base height, it says minimum, maximum, two to four inches. Previously, I kind of went back through whatever, so some of the previous, what you guys have discussed with subdivision things, and basically, it sees minimum to the maximum four inches unrealistic, so I'm not sure why the ordinance states that. So, you know, that's something that's kind of, like I said, I just started through weeks ago, so I'm not sure on, on that language, but other than that, everything else complies because the base height for the actual sign is, is the, the minimum is six feet, so it's kind of just a stolen structure. I think in the permit application itself, there is a sketch design, as well as where it's gonna be placed. I know it might be a little hard to tell in the survey, but it's gonna go on the two corners without, it's gonna be on the HOA property out of the right-of-way, which is fully compliant with our ordinance on the setbacks from right-of-way and line of sight.
So, again, the, the picture is this. Yep, okay. So, there's two columns, they're gonna be identical, one on each side. Is this coming off Newtown Road, or?
This is, I think, the Newtown.
Behind Publix.
Newtown, Publix is back over here. Newtown is here.
It's off the Publix Access Road.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Oh, off the public access. Okay, I got you. Okay, you bet.
Do we have, do we have ordinances for lumens for uplights?
I think potentially it might kind of talk about the lighting in the actual sub, so this kind of follows under the, in the section our sign ordinance, as well as what the ICD talks about residential subdivision signage within those mixed-use or conditional-use districts. Let me double-check to see if it talks about anything specifically.
That, yeah, it's on, it's on this, it's up in the upper left.
That ordinance, that development standard, it may be in that one.
I got it.
So, Kelly, it, it may be actually, if you recall, this is an ICD, so it has its own pocket of ordinance. And it could potentially be in there, so what we can do is actually get our engineer to make sure that it, that it meets that, if that's the case.
It looks really, it looks like they've got them really close and they're crossed, so it looks like it's gonna be a really tight area, so I don't think it should be a problem, but just, I didn't see any references to it, so.
Where are you looking at that?
So, if you go to.
It's on the top of L O 2.
This page, I mean, no, the pages aren't numbered, so.
No, go back. It's like, it'll be the fourth page in this little series.
L O 2, and then it's on the top part.
I don't feel like it's, it's really hard to.
It looks like they're low tire.
Yeah.
Oh.
But how does that work in with the landscaping that they're gonna put?
They're talking about the.
Plant in front of it, which is gonna cover the light if you look at L O 4. And what is that tiny little plant?
Four.
And it's a.
What, we call it writings, uplighting?
Yeah.
It's happening in better watches.
You need to go on our computer and blow it up, I think.
Yeah, I looked at it, and it's just.
You can blow it up on the screen here.
Is this like time-sensitive, or are they trying to get it approved, like?
Um, that I'm not 100% sure. I actually am not, except there's some number that was kind of in discussion with prior.
It's due to be on here.
So, you all can, you all can make a motion contingent upon it meeting those development standards if there is something that references lumens. I don't think we're prepared to answer that question, so we don't have that packet right here in front of us, and this is his first stab at this, so we'll, we'll make sure that if there is something in the development standard ordinance that specifically applies for this development, that it will comply.
I do have it right.
You said a motion.
You do that?
Yeah. With the external illumination, lighting directed towards the sign must be shielded so that it illuminates only the face of the sign and does not shine directly onto public right-of-way or adjacent properties. Lighting fixtures must be directed downward rather than upward. This might be applying to the straight commercial. And then, projected light fixtures used for external illuminated signs must be simple and attrusive to the appearance, blend, sign, schematics, and not obscure to the sign. I'm trying to see, 'cause like I said, a lot of this in that ICD applies a lot more to the commercial, but it does reference the monument signage.
Did they have, do y'all recall them having these in the photometric plan that y'all approved, or that was all just commercial?
Oh, I don't remember the photometric from this.
Uh, not unless.
That was a commercial.
Yeah, the photometric was on the, on the.
On the 7-Eleven.
On the parking lot. That's what we really need the photometric for, is the parking lot.
That's right, it was.
Yeah, not this. The only thing I heard there, Hunter, is that it has to be facing down. These would be facing up.
Instead of applying mainly to the commercial, you know, I mean, as long as it meets everything you just said, then.
It doesn't give a lumen, though, like, it doesn't specify.
I mean, and it's off the beaten path anyway. It's not even on Newtown Road.
I don't think that develop, I could be wrong, but I don't know if that development standard ordinance applied much to the residential.
Well, that's.
Much as good to the. I'd asked him to check, and there was not a whole lot regarding residential.
There's not. I was referencing the specific monument signage in the conditional-y district, 'cause that's with this being a monument sign for the subdivision, and it pretty much, it mirrors what's already in our ordinance with monument signs.
We'll confirm with our engineer just to check, though.
He has to. We don't have to make that a condition, because it already has to meet that anyway, so it's not a condition we can, we can impose. It's just enforce the rules, that's all. Correct.
Who's the condition of our approval?
Well, no, it's already a condition of the, of the zoning. It's already a condition of, it's already there.
Well.
It's administrative.
I said contingent upon it being.
Yeah.
Contingent. Sorry, I was using the wrong word.
The engineer reviewing it, which senses.
To make, to assure that it's in compliance with.
Correct, with the rules, with the current rules.
You're doing a draft motion.
All right. Now.
We need a draft motion?
Yeah.
So, a motion to approve the signage plan contingent upon it being consistent with.
Or the lighting consistent with.
With the sign permitting.
Development standards.
Sign permitting development standards.
Okay, someone say that.
Sign permitting development standards contingent of being in.
Compliant.
Compliant with the sign permitting development standards.
Are you making that motion?
Sure. All right, I like signs.
Twenty in a second.
Second. Second. Rich. Any further discussion? All in favor? Kent? No, we have Kent and Kent.
In favor?
Yeah.
There we go.
All right, unanimous. Moving on, I think, right? Update on the Marvin Heritage District.
So, I'll open this up and just say that the board, staff, everyone appreciates all of your efforts that we've got to this point of the Village Center District and all the work that's been gone through with you all and the Marvin Heritage Board. At the last meeting, Council went through the plan, they, they really liked it. There were a couple of things that our interim planner, Tom, had pointed out that we had to make changes to, and I'll let him go over that in just a minute. Very minor things, but the biggest thing that really held up our board in approving this, after all the work that's been done, is the fact that there were some changes made to 160D that prohibits local governments from regulating residential aesthetics. So, as you all know, in the creation of this ordinance that y'all spent a lot of time on, there were a lot of parameters in there that allowed us to have some control over those residential aesthetics, which turns out to be illegal. So, we need to find a different way to kind of, to kind of address that, and that's one of the things that the board discussed in discussing a conditional zoning, similar to what you have done with the Marvin Gardens, so that you still have some control over those residential aesthetics. Now, you can have residential control over commercial all day long, it's just the residential side of things. So, Tom has been exploring a couple of things. He still has not uncovered everything to be explored, so he's gonna show you a couple of different options. He's gonna tell you kind of a recap of some of the minor changes that have to be made, and what we're planning to do is present to the Council what those residential aesthetic controls will be before it comes back to you all, so we can make sure they're okay with that, and then we'll bring it back to you all for the formal process. Any questions on that?
So, when you say "you all," does that include continuing the Marvin Heritage District, strategic district, whatever that, yeah, okay.
Yeah. So, more than likely, what'll happen is Tom comes up with option A, B, C. We'll say, hey, you know, to the city council, are y'all okay with A, B, or C? Which one do you want to go with? They say B. We'll bring it back to the Heritage District Board, say, hey, do you guys want to go with B? Yes, we want to go with B. We'll bring it to y'all, and you guys can choose one there, and then it'll go back to Council for approval. So, that's kind of the thought process of where we're going. So, still a couple of months to play into figuring out what these options are, but pending no further questions about the procedure, I'll turn it over to Tom and let him kind of show you.
Let me just at least throw out this, 'cause we, we have spoken about it, you know, immediately after that council meeting, and I said, well, you know, I think that, I said, you know, we were somewhat concerned about that and trying to figure out how to work around it, and I said, but previously, Council, after Marvin Gardens, I guess, they specifically decided they didn't want any, any more conditional districts, and so that's sort of the reason we probably didn't even go down that route. Now, they're saying, well, maybe that was not the right direction.
Well, I think in the creation of this, what, what you all had recommended for approval, I think that everyone was under the impression that it was solid and it was okay to be implemented, and we've later found out that it's not. I guess it was changes due to 160D, but I'll let Tom speak to that.
Anyway, that was, you know, just, you know, a little bit, 'cause I think we even threw out some of those things early, early on, you know.
Yeah, we looked at three or four, we looked at three or four different ways of planning, and, and, I mean, Rohit was, was, you know, most in favor of the one that we went with, but we kind of looked at, you know, what are the benefits and the drawbacks to each of the different types, and so this is the one we went with.
Yeah, so that was sort of the, you know, the, not, it's totally new to everybody here.
We still have that matrix in one of the agenda packets, if y'all want to see that again.
And I will say, I know I sent an email out immediately after this happened, explaining to y'all that the rezoning signs were pulled. We got a lot of questions about why we did it, and so just letting y'all know that the district was not physically there to be rezoned, so we pulled that rezoning here and so that it no longer exists. I will be submitting a formal, there's no formal process, but I will be submitting something to withdraw that application, just so there's not a rezoning floating out there until this district is actually created. So, just so y'all know, it's just formality at this point. Once the district is actually created, we'll come back with the rezoning request, do it all over again.[1668.37]
Now it's your turn.
Okay, good, that's a good overview and some insight that I wanted to know, and I'll look at that matrix and Tom Austin, that sounds good. So my name's Tom White, now I'm a town planning consultant, in focus, we're based in Indianapolis, and the village is kind of our normal size in, in town, we generally specialize in small towns. The founder, I'll mention Rick Flo, he, in addition to being a AICP, a certified planner like me, he does a lot of work in, as a legal expert, he's called on by attorneys representing cities, usually trying to defend the city from a lawsuit, so he's got years and years of experience in kind of having his antennas up for things that might trip a, a village or a town. Everything, everything that's been done on this has been by the book, as far as the form-based code part, y'all had the charrette, citizen input, what land uses do you want, and, and, and community outreach, and so when, when Rohit contacted me and got us on board to start assisting, was sort of day-to-day work, it didn't really start out where I was going to so much help with the Heritage District, but since I had form-based code experience, he said, well, we could kind of get two-for-one, so I said, yeah, I'd love to use that. Anyways, I said, here, here's the avenue, if you're going to do form-based code rather than sort of conventional zoning, so basically I said, here's the structure, and he put all of this information into the tables and charts and imagery and everything, and when he was probably eighty percent finished, I got kicked into the 160D, and that's the state law, where it brings a lot of planning regulations that were spread across the general statute and case law, and county and city, they were all over the place, and after five years, I finally went in one place called Chapter D. So the village, like all the other governments throughout the town, throughout the state, whether it was staff or consultant, we were working really hard to go through the whole zoning ordinance to bring it up to code, so many things you wouldn't believe, and so they adopted that, but about the time I finished it is when Rohit left, and I got the assignment from Christina, can you brief the council on the Heritage District, they're all poised to call for a public hearing and then adopt it, and that, so I said, sure, I'll come to the June meeting, I'll be in there anyways for the 160D stuff, and since I really had gone from, and the part that was perfect that's been done is total creative juices and freedom on, on what was done with the form-based code. If you had, it really, if you had a member of your team on that that was an attorney, they would have to continuously pull the reins in, pull the reins in, and it would just, it would just kind of box you and nothing. I kept sort of hearing different things that were discussed going in there and worked with them, it's not like I didn't see some of this stuff, but by the time I finished 160D and was all in on the legal part, I saw some things and I had to advise Christina, there's just, there's about four categories and about two things per category that need to be addressed before it's ready for adoption.
Very minor, though.
Very minor, but the main thing is, we, there's, there's four areas in 160D state statute that you do have to revise. The other things are minor, the, and the, one of the categories is you can really strengthen your legal defense by doing a few things like adopt part of the, really the regulating plan into your comp plan, but I'll mention that later. So anyway, bringing Rick back up, he's been extremely busy with other clients, and I said, Rick, I need your input on, on Marvin, on developing some alternatives to proceed with this, because as the council said, they want to, they do want to regulate aesthetics of single family, they're not, they, they don't feel good about just the commercial part, so they do want that authority that the village can regulate the style of the homes, which the state doesn't allow, and so.
Can I ask you a question? So I thought that, I thought that 160D wouldn't let us regulate the materials used in building, but the style, I didn't think that was part of that, I thought it was like the physical materials used to build, you can't restrict that.
They're, they get, they call them design elements, and they list what's, what's prohibited to regulate, but then you can continue to regulate high massing setbacks, that sort of thing, but, but when you get into windows and styles, and I can see if materials is listed, that's when you cross the line to just whatever the state enables local governments to regulate. So, up to a point, and then after that, you can't, but it tells you, it says, goes on to say you can, and then, so here's the, not a lot of choices, yeah, we're still studying it, but one is conditional zoning, and the 160D made it clear that you can only do that for residential uses if you have the consent of the, written consent of the property owner. And so, I said, it sounds like the village might be interested in that, and Rick thought about it for many, thought really what would be better is, because it would be better if property owners apply for this zoning, and because a judge, if, if it, and believe me, and I don't mean to be this way, but when we work on these regulations, we do have to always think, look behind her, you know, behind her back, if, we wouldn't prepare our clients well and legally defensible for success, in addition to trying to, you know, capture the vision and make it all work, but he said, think about it, if, if you are creating this, this, this body of work, and you ask the property owner, would you sign off on this, we want to rezone your property, we just need your, you know, signature, and we got to get everybody else's too. They could easily say later, when they either apply to do something and are denied, they could say, well, I didn't understand that part, you kind of misrepresented my development rights, so we recommend, as an option, and that the property owner apply for a rezoning to these, these sub-districts, the ones that are the residential only, and the ones that may allow residential, but we still want to regulate the, the aesthetics. The beauty of all this work is, in the conference plan, you can simply take that color-coded regulating map and call it a small area map, and adopt it, really replace it under future land use map. You also would adopt the regulations you've already written, except for some, a few changes we have to make, and so when someone comes to the village, they can say, I've watched the whole thing, or I'm, I have an option to buy this person's property, I've watched the whole thing, or have my attorneys look at it, and they would say, I am applying to rezone it to residential only, the comp plan already sets it up like that, you already have the zoning regulations in your zoning ordinance by then, and so they're just simply rezoning it. And that's the cleanest way, because when a, when a property owner is the one applying, I mean, they take all, I mean, that's not something where we've twisted their arm or tried to sell them on, on something that they might, they just say they don't understand. So that's, and we try to stay simple, there might be some other sort of exotic solutions we'll suggest, but that's, that's pretty straightforward, so that's the one so far we're really.
So we're not trying to throw all the options out, in, in short, what he's trying to say is there's a lot of different options, we're going to look at it, everything, we're going to present everything to you all and decide what the best way to skin this cat is, so that's one of the four things that he needs to talk about changing, the other three consist of.
Well, can I get clarification on that? So instead of, me understanding, you know, not that, so, instead of the village rezoning everything like we started out, you know, per that plan and stuff, and this is the Marvin Heritage District, and this parcel is residential only, and this is commercial only, and this is, we won't rezone the whole thing, we may have that district, but, but we'll have to rezone parcel A whenever the, the landowner comes in, and parcel B when the landowner comes, but then, how does that give us control? Would, would he say, I want to rezone to residential, subject to making all the houses that look like this? I mean, how, how would that give us any control?
Sort of the clean part of it, he wouldn't have to do that, he's, he's, or she, are submitting the application, so they're rezoning it to residential only. You review it, you approve it, it's consistent with the comp plan, regulation's already there, so he would turn these regulations over to his designers and engineers, and they would go to work, so he, he doesn't really even have to say, I, I'm willing to go through the process of review and all that, it's already.
The design aesthetics are already baked into the regulations, so if they're, if they're applying for it, they're signing up.
So, we can have a regulation that says that it has to look like this and this material and stuff, but then, it, it's in place, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to understand.
Yep, yep.
It's, we can have the ordinance, we just can't enforce it unless.
And they're the.
And they're the ones that come in and say, we want to rezone per this, this regulation, is that what you're, I mean, it seems like.
So if they disagree.
Then they're just by right.
They're, so, they're not part of the Marvin Heritage District. If, if they don't agree to our regulations and, and ordinances, they say, well, then I'm not part of the Marvin Heritage District.
They could say that, they could also say, you know, I've spent twenty thousand on engineering under yours, there's a few things that won't work, would you let me apply, and then they have the right to apply for text amendment to, to tweak a few things based on their study, and you can review and go, good, good.
So we said, they either agree or disagree, or they say, we agree with some of it, we'd like you to change this part of it, and we can agree to that or disagree.
Correct.
And that, and that's just one of the options.
No, that's option one, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I was just trying to understand how.
No, I get it.
He's, he's going to come back with all the different. Backward conversation at that point, pros and cons for each one.
This one is it puts the on-ness on the owner as opposed to on us.
Yes, and it also, the market drives the rezoning, sometimes it's not always wise to rezone everything at once, because guess what, this village may have to pay for the infrastructure to serve it, the roads might not be ready, you might have, you might not have the personnel to take care of some common areas, so the applicant, under your scenario, it might not be the whole owner, it might start to be a part of it, and then it grows and grows, you know, to fulfill that, that overall scheme, but, so it kind of controls, but it's set, it's set in, in the comp plan, it's a strong foundation, so anyway, any other questions before?
Like I said, I was just trying to understand it, you know, how that accomplished what 160D said we couldn't do.
So that, obviously, as you see, it's pretty multifaceted, I mean, it's a pretty large thing, it's probably going to be a little while before y'all see this again, because they're going to have to get together and work out the options, figure out what's the best option, and then it could be months before y'all see it, just letting y'all know that we are working on it, that's the reason that it's going to be taking so long, if, if it's, you know, a few months from now.
So does that put the Marvin Heritage District on hold until there is something else to review?
Yes, yes.
Are you guys going to be looking at the tax implications, like, of people buying into and piecemealing into the Heritage District, I know, because when we, I think Rohit was saying that the initial kind of overlay was going to generate a certain amount of taxes to make it actually beneficial, or to, you know what I mean, like.
The MSD.
And if people are going in one at a time, whenever, and they don't have to opt in, that has pretty strong, like, then they don't opt into the tax, that tax bracket either.
The, the intent of the MSD is that it allows us to then increase, or to impose an additional tax rate on those properties that are within that MSD, and in return, they get special infrastructure, I mean, they get, not special services, but increased services per se, so, I mean, that can help to go towards improved sidewalk, improved lighting, if it is infrastructure and all of that, so it's kind of doing it all at one, I mean, with my experience with MSD is like, they can opt out, but if we want it, they, we can still put them in it, it, but it's kind of a legal process, we have that right as a municipality, we just have to establish that district within the boundaries, and it has to be done. We have to set, we have to have the district established before the beginning of a fiscal year, as well as then have that tax rate set.
I think your question goes back to how it's going to impact the infrastructure development, if people are coming and going as they please, kind of.
Yeah, it's like if someone over here wants to do something, and they have to have parking in back, and there was, you know, the grand scheme of things, then they were going to enter from off of Marvin Road and have a road that goes back behind, I mean, like, you know what I mean, people are landlocked, and like, it's just, it sounds like kind of a hot mess.
She's, she's asking basically, if a hundred percent don't come in at once, how does that impact how we're going to build things in the long term? If we've only got.
Especially the infrastructure, because you don't know who's going to be a part of the district, and who's going to be using the services.
Some of the infrastructure, that's, you know, once again, I kind of just came into this, and I've had experience with MSD, and I guess.
You mean, you're two weeks, you're not, you're not like an expert on this.
I'm, I'm trying, but.
Disappoint me.
There are alternate ways to do that, even if it's not through MSD, in my experience, like the example for sidewalk, you can put this in your development regulations overall, if any new development has to have sidewalk in front of every development, with that being said, if it's a sidewalk to nowhere, the municipality can take, can, yeah, can enforce the developer to either put the sidewalk in or pay the town the quoted cost, and the town thinking, can then use that money and put sidewalk to connect it to originally what it's there, so it's kind of taking in, instead of having that infrastructure, whatever it is, they can pay what it would cost for that developer to put it in, and the town can then use that to pay to get it there eventually, so it kind of offsets a little bit, but it kind of increases that potential to, to grow and then have, once again, so if it eventually gets there, then, then the town can go ahead and kind of put it back in, hopefully, the money should hopefully offset, is what I'm trying to say.
But it's a good question, and I don't think we have the answer to that, because we're not like the economic experts in determining how much MSD is needed to pay for whatever infrastructure is needed, and to be completely honest with you, we've got estimates of how much things are going to cost, but none of it's engineered, approved, or figured out, calculated, so I don't know that our numbers are actually legitimately right, so I don't know to get to your question, but we do have a year to figure it out, because we have to have it done, but, or we can't do the, the tax until July first, so.
Will the, will the proposed land uses, like mixed-use residential that is on that map, will that stay, or, because I, I was always confused as to how we got that, whether it was Rohit's idea, whether it was the landowner saying, I want to be this, or I want to do this, like, do we know what the, for lack of a better lay of the land is, and no pun intended, but I mean, literally, who, who's deciding which parcels are which uses?
Yeah, I think the answer to that question is those individual parcels that were labeled commercial, mixed-use, residential, were all part of the approved land use plan, so I think all of that was public, you know, publicly driven, and I think that's where those parcels came from. I don't foresee that changes plan.
Yeah. There were sub-zones on the future land use map, they don't perfectly align, the, the entire district aligns, but the sub-zones were only labeled as possible.
Yeah, they weren't, they weren't approved as.
They were subject to change.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think that's where it was driven from, from the, I mean, obviously it can change at any point in time, but I think that's where it was initially driven from.
So, so the, that map could technically change depending on who wants to do what, and who opts in, and who does not do.
What do you mean what map? The one in the future land use map?
The one that said like the.
It's a Heritage District.
The actual Heritage District?
Yeah, that like purple and.
Well, that's the actual, that's the actual districts within the district, so.
There were, there were, there were sub-zones of, within the, the, the entire Heritage District in the land use plan.
It's all legislative, though, it's all legislative, I mean, it's just like me applying for a business rezoning right here on this property, it could happen, it could not happen, so it's all subject to whatever you all recommend and approve, now obviously, we would like to see consistency statements with what's in the land use plan, but, you know, for whatever reason, if that changes, that's always an option, it's not set in stone, but I think it's pretty much there, if that makes sense.
My sort of observation was it was the product of months and months of working with the property owners and the, what's compatible, one used next to another, so achieving that was a huge goal, I would probably recommend replacing that inset map in the future land use map that Austin mentioned, which is the same boundary with the one that's in the form-based code, to really strengthen that one in the form-based code, so it is consistent with the plan.
Well, part of 160D though, Tom, is that if we have that district established, and they go to a rezoning, even though, let's say, in that consistency statement, we state that it's not consistent, but it is still then approved, it automatically then amends the future land use map to then become consistent, so even though it's like, it's weird, because they can apply, and it, we state that it's not consistent, but the council can still approve it, but what that does is then automatically update the future land use map to that, so it kind of kills two birds with one's eye, so I said, do a future land use map amendment and a zoning map amendment.
But it also overrides the decisions that people made after much consideration and debate, but that's the thing about this, it's just, it's kind of crazy, is like, you know, we make decisions, we get things approved, and then basically, what I'm hearing is that any of it can be undone and applied for, does that?
Well, that's what 160D did, 160D gave a lot of rights to the property owners, and, with those processes involved, if it's applying for permits, text amendments, I mean, as a, as a property owner, resident of Marvin, you have that right to apply for whatever. Now, if it doesn't get approved, that's, that's then on the elected officials, but it kind of gives you, which you had those options prior, but 160D kind of made it clear, and made the municipalities have certain timelines to, to meet where it's not kind of getting held up, or red ta, you know, stuck up in red tape and so on, so it's like, I guess I get what you're saying, but, I mean, that process is always going to be available, anybody can come in, really, anybody can come in off of a given street and technically apply for a resident, or apply for a rezoning, or apply for a text amendment, it's just, is their case valid, it's got to be heard, but do they have a valid kind of case?
So, there were some residents that approached about asking if they could join in the Marvin Heritage District, because their property is next to what was coming up with this, so does that mean at this point, then, they would have the opportunity to follow, if everybody has to opt in, do they have the opportunity to opt in, or to apply to be in, then at this point?
I think it goes back to the consistency in the land use plan, any, I mean, any board can say, yeah, absolutely, come on in, is it consistent, or is it inconsistent with the land use plan? If it's inconsistent, it can be challenged, or if it's consistent, it's highly unlikely for it to be challenged.
Yeah, and kind of to build off that, so, that's what I was kind of saying, is that they can apply and it can be inconsistent, but the council has to give a statement, or a reasoning behind why they're still approving it. a reasoning behind why they're still approving it because it's inconsistent. And same thing if it's consistent and they deny it.
Yeah.
Because it, once again, it can be challenged legally. So to kind of answer your question, yes, the property owner has a right to apply. If, um, council decides to, that finds that, you know, it's not consistent with the land use because it's not in what that future land use map identifies as the Marvin Heritage District and it's just identified as residential, then, yeah, they can apply. Once again, then council can make that ultimate decision. And, you know, just to use this for an example, I'm not saying this is what's going to happen, but they can say, okay, it's going to be, um, they, even though it's inconsistent, council approves because to the Marvin Heritage District residential only because it's a residential use. Um, they're already existing uses residential and they're applying for a district that also includes the same residential, um, the residential use as a, as a, as the kind of the main permitted use of that. And what that would do is even though it's inconsistent, it can still be challenged. I'm not an attorney, I'm not saying, I'm just kind of using that as their reasoning to, to state that why it was inconsistent. Then it would be rezoned and it would also automatically update that future land use map. So that residential property on the future land use map would then be updated to state that it was supposed to be in the, once again, future lane uses, um, for Marvin Heritage. But we update our future, we're supposed to update our future land use map every 10 years now.
And it's just updating the map, it's not updating the actual land use plan? Or is it?
The, the 2020, um, land use plan, which is the narrative and the map together, um, I would recommend to reinforce and write more language to the Heritage District so that when the planning board and the village council thinks, reviews proposals, they can use that as a solid basis. It's, it's supported and, and the narrative and the map speaks to it. And.
Well, that's the point of it, right?
Yes.
Yes, the foundation. You want to, you want a house to have a strong foundation. The comp plan is your strong foundation.
So we can tweak that a little bit.
Yeah, I think, I think though, that that was taken away from us because the strategic plan, the Heritage District Strategic Planning Committee was given that task, correct?
Given what task?
Well, we didn't inform until the.
Well, of defining, of defining what the Heritage District is going to look like.
But now that they have.
Sorry?
But now that they have, have in the, in the code.
Right. Like he was just saying that we should, that we should be doing it, but we're not. I don't know.
Yeah, I got, I got confused.
Yeah, sorry.
What you don't want to do is, you don't want to be confused and you don't want to confuse property owners and investors most importantly, and, and your elected officials. You want to, you want to firm plan. It's a product of a year and a half or two of work. It's excellent. Um, and.
You're giving us too much credit.
Yeah.
Much, much, much more.
But nothing was stripped from you all because the MHD board is almost like an advisory board to you all, if that makes sense. They bless it.
Yeah, we're getting updates every single, whether they do every single meeting.
So whatever they recommend will ultimately come to you all, which is going to be recommended or not to the board, which is approved or not. So.
They're an advisory to the advisory.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a new, that's a new development.
Inception.
We, that's the first time I've heard that because we, we, that was a question I had a long time ago.
Well, it's a rezoning. Think of it as a simple rezoning. Y'all have to bless it first. So.
The question Rick asked me when, when he has seen me, you know, spend some time on this was, was crystallized. Does the village want to facilitate or regulate? Um, you know, to, to regulate is, was the first approach. Let's rezone it all at once. Everybody has to live with it by our rules if we can get it legal. Um, and, and the, the other approach, which the village has done so far is to facilitate, facilitate this effort. And, um, so it's a comfort level of what, what the, uh, council wants and, and, and those that advise them.
And I think it could be half and half. I mean.
It's your can.
Because people, people, neighbors need to know that some regulation is happening to feel comfortable, but we also don't want to stifle, you know, the developers either and landowners.
Yep. And, and so back to your question, what if someone wants to opt in that's on the outskirts? Might not be time. You might want the core to get strong first and then, then start entertaining rezonings. They can rezone, but you can say, we don't, we, you know, have been denied or we don't make it or she fails. Um, so anyway, the speed of approvals is controlled by the village council that takes your recommendations and, and staff. Um, but.
What were the other three areas that we were not?
Are we discussing those tonight?
Yeah.
You, 160D, it lets you set up a required minimum square footage for single family residential is another one.
Wait, they, they, it doesn't allow you to do that?
No. And, and Robert did have a, kind of a footnote at the very end about that and the aesthetics, but it still appears throughout the, the rest of the.
To the woman.
You can't, yeah, you, local governments may, are prohibited from requiring minimum square footage for single family residential. And so when you look at those tables, it says things like.
You have like minimum of 1,200 or 500 square foot.
We can still do one per, or one.
Oh, yeah.
But they can put a, they can put a 400 square foot home on there if they want.
That's correct.
Okay.
As long as it meets the definition of a dwelling is, is, is sign off.
They can put as small as they want.
Basically as a bedroom, bathroom and kitchen.
So that's the second one. The third one was.
The market, the market wouldn't bear it.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah. If somebody wants to do this, how good luck.
They want to pay $500,000 for a tiny house?
Right. Not worried about that one.
Damn nice tiny house.
Three.
Um, the third one was the municipal service district. There's a part in 160D that says the zoning ordinance can't basically establish the, um, taxing and a few other sort of financial mechanisms. And, and that's not really the place, even if it was not prohibited from appearing. So to take that out.
Wait, so we couldn't, we couldn't have higher taxes in a certain zone?
You certainly can, but the zoning ordinance isn't the place to establish that. It needs to be done on.
Legislature.
We can't say we're going to zone this in exchange for this, basically.
Got it.
A, a, a big reason all this is so important now is 160D, um, requires local governments to pay plaintiffs legal costs, um, after the lawsuit. It used to be where, just like anything, you could sue somebody and then you could follow up to say, now you got to pay my legal costs now. It's automatic. And that, and that's a lot on a, on a small town. So that's the, that's the.
That's only if we lose.
Yes. But, but boy, they could rack, rack up the cost before you, you're, you're caged, you know, so even if you're in the right, but.
That's true.
So that's, that's the legal part. There's some statements that need to be corrected. Um, Marvin does not have a national historic district and those properties aren't on the national register that are sort of mentioned in there. Um, they've been studied, but, and they're, one area is eligible, but more work would need to be done to have a historic district or properties and.
That's probably a slow movement training.
It is, it is. Um, let's see, add more detail. I'll try to go fast.
So we're going to have the name changed as well?
We're going to say, we can still just call it historic.
Well, heritage.
Heritage.
Call it anything you want.
You can call it historic if you want, but it's not deemed.
I'm going to call it disco pit.
We need to add more detail on how to administer the code. Um, there's not sufficient detail on the review body responsible to review the proposed designs. He makes mention sort of like that staff will do it. I'm not, it's, I'm not, I'm not saying it was Robert or any author. It's just what it says. But we need to go ahead and have, um, either a design review committee appointed or one that exists such as yours to expand your authority before it's adopted. We, we can't like change gears, shouldn't change gears on, on this so early. Get it right the first time.
The main street committee. Didn't after, wasn't there a main street committee that was, or was that afterwards?
That was after it was approved. There was going to be an additional committee that was created that was going to oversee lights and hanging baskets and benches and.
A Marvin Heritage District Board.
Yeah, that's, that's, you're correct.
Yeah. So that was coming after.
So that's a, that's a maintenance thing, not an approval body.
That's in 2032.
That was the approved body once there were things, once there was actually something in there. And that's when it went from theoretical to applied. And you were going to have those people.
He's kind of referring to the fact that like if village hall, for instance, right now, y'all as a design review board looked at it and said, yes, no, yes, no. He's really talking about who does that for this district. Is it going to be you all or is it going to be this board or is it going to be some other process?
We'll need to define.
Yeah.
And that board would supers, would essentially replace the committee.
So is the Marvin Heritage District put on hold then? Is that what I heard?
Until they figure out the residential.
So I won't miss any more meetings. That's good.
Yeah, just to clarify.
Tuesday's off for a while.
Thursday.
Thursday's off, get Thursday's off.
The committee's still going to meet about the strategic plan, correct?
Oh, no, no, no. Christine already said that we were done for a while.
The district, district, not the committee.
They're going to meet to say we're not meeting?
You have an adopted schedule.
So just to clarify, yeah, part, partly what's going on with this now is that one, since I'm kind of coming in, I'm getting from, you know, familiarized with it, obviously hearing everybody's concerns and kind of the history and where, how everything got to be where we're at. You know, it's kind of a learning process because I can read what's in the code, but at the same time, I don't have a full understanding on why certain things are. Um, you know, with that being said, with, with how this happened and, you know, council kind of wanting these kind of different options before we kind of proceed, it kind of helps me learn it. And so, you know, I haven't had a chance to kind of sit down with Tom and kind of go through these kind of one by one and, and really build an approach to kind of move forward on. Um, but my goal is kind of at least, I think, to get some back to the, the committee or to council within the next month or two to, you know, get back on the process. Not saying that's when it's going to be approved because I don't have, I mean, it's all going to be based on, you know, recommendation, recommendation, then, then approval.
We might have to go back through, depending on how this gets done, we might have to go back, go back through a legal process of involving the community and.
Possibly. Tom will bring up those options at that point.
The strategic plan, this is one part of the strategic plan. There, there, I have a whole sheet of other steps from my research. I've, I've, I've never prepared a strategic plan. Um, I'm a planner, but, um, when you look at what the charrette did, which probably had some strategic planners on it and other places, it's, uh, marketing, recruiting, um, maintenance. It just goes on and on. So anyways, I don't know what was envisioned for the committee when it was adopted and appointed, but, um, it could be a lot of work, you know, and outside of just the code, the code's part of it. And, um, but anyways, the, um, analyze and add the other part. So the categories was the, make it comply with state planning laws, correct statement. The third category was more detail on how to administer, including the review process. It just kind of defers to the subdivision process. And I think Hunter will probably study that more. Um, what, you know, what's the process? What's the timeframe? So are there application fees? Review by staff? Are there other agencies like the county that also reviews what goes on? Um, what about appeals and resubmittals? Um, so anyway, there, there just needs to be a little more study on the, on the review process. The fourth is strengthen the form base code by amending other documents, primarily the, um, 2020 land use plan, like I've already covered. Um, and that'll serve you really well. And also enhance the staff report that, um, follows, that, that sort of introduces the form base code. Pretty much what people got was the application and then the code, but you can build some legal defense by saying the chronology that led up to it. And I already had drafted that for, for Robert. He put some of it in there, but, um, you wouldn't have a lot of that history. It's not necessary in the, in the code.
So more like tell the story.
Tell the story, yes. Yeah. And then, and then, um, that, that strengthens it also. So anyway, those are the four categories right there that will put you on a better, put you on a better path. Um, it's kind of like, uh, this isn't a beta version. You can't just put it out there and see what happens. You have to know it's going to work. Terrific, terrific work. I've been doing this for 30 years. Awesome. Um, there, there are firms that do just this and 200, 300,000 dollar, you know, products, something like this for years. A lot of political division is created and everything, but everything that's been done, there's been no missteps. This is not a misstep either. It's just, um, raising a couple of yellow flags. Let's just polish off a few areas and, and put it's on its way. Hunter's here at a perfect time. He'll take a look at it too and may think of other things I haven't. Um, but, um.
So I hear you're saying we were underpaid.
Well, actually, I was getting ready to say, you actually went back and counted up how many hours and assigned some sort of dollar value. We probably spent more than that.
Yeah, I don't know about that. You're valuing your time very high.
I'm a nonprofit, so I'm good.
So quite a long time. Sorry, probably more time than it needed, but, um, I could tell y'all, I'll have probably some of you are on the committee. And so.
Three, that's right.
Good, three of you.
So maybe y'all just keep it running, like just placeholder in your meeting, just to kind of give them an update. Hey, this is where we're at, um, up until the point we are ready to let y'all see it again.
Yeah, I'm good with that. I mean, I want to make sure you guys are up, up to date on, on all of that moving forward. And, um, as Tom mentioned, yeah, kind of your third week, I briefly went into it, but, um, especially kind of moving forward now that I'm kind of caught up on a few things, got more, you know, acclimated and familiar with other things. Um, I, I now have time to kind of dive into this and really make this kind of maybe a priority focus to where, you know, yes, it's kind of on hold, but it's just kind of a, it's just in a holding pattern for one sec. It's not like it's, um, you know, that, that, that there's a lot of things that are, that you're going to hold it up. My goal is to kind of keep moving it forward, even if it's slowly, just to get, get these minor things figured out.
Perfect. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Record breaking. Tell me about you guys.
Well, thanks, Christine.
Yeah.
We ain't there yet.
Moving on.
Yeah, let's do it.
Do we have any action like?
I got nothing.
All right. Board member comments. Start with our newest member, Rich.
Well, thank you. Uh, it's a pleasure to be here with you all. Uh, as I started earlier that I had been on the plane for five years and, uh, need to take a break for family reasons, but glad to be back here. My head's spinning from the whole Marvin Heritage District, so I have a lot of catching up to do. So I am familiar with what a land use plan is and a lot of the other things that go on here. But I look like I have some big shoes to fill because I know some people that have left, but, uh, you all have done great work and I look forward to working with you all.
It's Peter.
Welcome, Rich. Glad to have you. Um, and we're glad to know that you're going to take over some of, uh.
Paul's wordsmithing.
Paul's wordsmithing and like, you know, fine details. So, um, just glad to see everybody back in person and welcome Hunter. We're, we're very glad to have you and, um, and thank you for also being here. It was nice to meet you as well. So.
All set. The, the welcome and the, the thank yous for your work and for stepping in and for helping us. And, um, it's just so nice to see people, to see you all here. And so, um, yeah, thanks.
Exactly. Uh, echo Kelly and Melinda's statement. It's good to meet Melinda for the first time and Rich, welcome back.
It's hard to imagine.
And Hunter, welcome. Um, look forward to working with you in the months and years ahead.
Ken, any comments? Find the right button.
That's Kent or Kent?
I found it. Uh, I'm good. Thanks.
All right. Now it's your turn, Kent.
Oh, thank you. Yeah. So, uh, yeah, welcome, uh, everybody that's, that's known the team. Look forward to hopefully being in person, uh, next meeting and seeing everybody face to face and, um, that's all I got.
And our council liaison, Mr. Merkelise, are you there?
Yeah. Uh, I just wanted to, again, thank the planning board for the important work that you all do. Um, and I really appreciated that Tom was there tonight to be able to, and thank you, Tom. Really worked with the council, uh, during the workshop session and, and really just trying to, you know, this whole thing about rezoning, um, and I'm speaking for me, is a very, very, very important matter. And, um, you know, I personally, as someone who's lived longer in Marvin than I have, um, it, it concerns me. It concerns me in terms of decisions that we make. It affects property owners, so we have to make the right decision. Uh, so thank goodness we're kind of a little bit of, where we can actually double check and cross the Ts and dot the lines and. actually double check and cross the Ts and dot the lines and, you know, um, really, uh, look at what we're doing. And the basic thing was the inconsistency between the hard work that you all had done with the, the land use plan and then looking at the Heritage District and starting to realize, ah, but there is a couple inconsistencies going on. As Austin said, the, the, you know, from the broad view, it was there, but when you start dialing in, it looked, you know, like we really need to look at it a little bit more seriously. So, you know, um, and, uh, I wanted to also thank Kelly, um, from the planning board meeting that we had last month because, uh, you had some, you know, important emotions that you were feeling and, and, you know, it was, it was coming through and that's why we all wanted to take a second look. So thank you, Tom, for helping us today at the workshop.
Emotional woman.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Get in trouble for that.
Household, uh, have you got anything in addition you'd like to say, Hunter?
Uh, no, I'm, once again, I'm happy to be here. Uh, looking forward to working with everybody. Um, I will mention, you know, with the packets and things or page numbers where I, my goal is to try making sure you guys have all the information, um, one in the memos and two, you know, with those supplemental attachments because I think they do make the meeting go faster. I mean, all the information's right there in front of you. And if you are good board members, you'll review it prior to the meeting. But, you know, I, I.
I'm ashamed.
With, with that being said, I think, you know, if I can get you all that information, especially as, you know, during discussion, it's right there and, um, and it can kind of speed that up. Uh, so, uh, once again, I'm looking forward to it. And if anybody has any specific individual questions, concerns, or, you know, just want to, want to chat, feel free to reach out to me. Um, all my contact information is the same as Rohit's. So, uh, if you need that, just let me know.
So your email address is Rohit@.
No, it's still.
It's the planner. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's very good.
That's less.
I was trying to remember if you guys had individual ones or if you just had, you just had.
It's so much less work when someone leaves.
Yeah, it's true. It's true.
You got anything else?
I don't.
All right. I just, you know, wrap up. I'm glad to see physical faces here.
No doubt.
Yeah. And I appreciate everybody who, who was able to make it and, you know, glad to have you with us.
Much more efficient person, aren't we?
It, it is.
No doubt. No doubt. Cause we can look at things and, you know, we can pull stuff up and throw our computer. I mean, this is a great, great meeting.
Yeah.
115 minutes.
I don't think it's the fastest we've ever done, but.
No, it's not.
Well, if we moved to adjourn, we could make it.
I have a question to adjourn.
You got a second, Kelly?
7.5. Okay.
All in favor?